Order the regular meeting of the Beaverton City Council. City Recorder, please call the roll.
Mayor Beatty?
Here.
Thank you. Councillor Dugger?
I'm here.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Here.
Councillor Hassan?
Here.
Council President Kimmy?
Here.
Councillor Teeter?
Here.
Councillor Tivnan?
Here.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight's agenda starting with a work session. We will then move to visitor comments, proclamation, and consent agenda. Two public hearings, five first reading ordinances, another work session, and then conclude with council new business. We will now enter a work session regarding the Tuilatin Valley Highway Bus Rapid Transit Project. We'll begin the work session with a presentation by Andy Varner, Director, Community Development Director, and Jocelyn Blake, Interim Government Relations Manager. When the presentation is done, each councillor will have the opportunity to comment on the presentation and ask questions of the presenter. You guys ready? Please begin.
Yes, and I don't know if Jocelyn is online. If not, I'll take the portion for her presentation. But, good evening, councillors and mayor. I'm Andy Varner, Community Development Department Director. Jocelyn Blake is the... Oh, there she is. Go ahead, Jocelyn, you can introduce yourself.
Hello, Jocelyn Blake, Government Relations Manager.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to talk to you about the TV Highway Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, project. This is a continuation of a discussion that we had a couple months ago in January when Trimet and Metro were visiting with the council to present some details on this project. So, tonight, we've got a few policy questions or decisions in front of the council. You can see them on the screen there. One will be to approve the proposed locally preferred alternative, or LPA, as adopted by the TV Highway Steering Committee for the TV Highway BRT project. The second policy question will... Consideration of approving $1 million in transportation development tax, or TDT, funds for the project development of the TV Highway BRT project. And then the third will be to direct staff, namely the city manager, to negotiate an intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, with Trimet reflecting Beaverton's contribution of $1 million for the project development, which is the next stage in this project. Next slide, please. Okay, to question number one, the policy question number one. On February 13th, the Steering Committee for the TV Highway project adopted the following project proposal for the locally preferred alternative, the LPA. You can see the map on the screen. Not all of the map. It stretches from the Beaverton Transit Center all the way west to Forest Grove. Screen's not big enough to show the entire route. But that is a locally preferred alternative. That is a concept plan that will lead the project development. And again, that's what Trimet and Metro were presenting to council at the end of January to discuss these details. As a quick reminder and a summary of the project, the LPA for the BRT project eliminates partial pullout stop design and it creates safer bus and bike interactions at stations. It upgrades stations to include shelters and amenities at 41 station pairs. It involves rebuilding four intersections, purchasing 15 new vehicles, bus chargers, and bus facility upgrades. It will involve upgrading 59 signals to accommodate transit signal priority, filling sidewalk gaps, crossing locations to provide safer and more comfortable pedestrian access, and finally, reducing the number of stops to reduce travel times where the estimated wait time would be approximately 12 minutes. As a reminder, Beaverton's six station locations you can find on the map here: the Beaverton Transit Center, Watson Avenue, Hocken Avenue, Murray Boulevard, Milliken Way, and 170th Avenue. Again, the proposed timeline for this project would be for it to go into project development with funding split over two years, the following two fiscal years, '26 and '27, and a proposed construction timeline for the four remainder out years up until FY 2031. Okay, next slide, and Jocelyn will take it from here.
Thank you. So, the second policy question before you today is our financial contribution to the project development part specifically. On February 13th, the TV Highway Steering Committee voted to approve the project funding plan per the pie chart you see on the screen. So, our contribution of $1 million would be part of the overall $100 million total contribution from local and regional governments, which is one-third of the 300 estimated total costs. The $100 includes partner contributions, potential RFA allocation, and $5 million set aside from the carbon reduction program. The other potential contributor is the state legislature, where our partners are currently working on a capital construction ask for $50 million. The final $150 million is expected to come from the Federal Transit Authority's Capital Improvement Grant, Small Starts Program. It's a match, so we have to come up with the first $150 million to unlock the match requirements for the second $150 million. The RFA act's proposal is still under deliberation and may be slightly less than the $30 million anticipated. We should know the outcome of the RFA process in the next couple months. The decision on the $50 million will come shortly before the end of the legislative session in June. Both the $50 million from the state and the $150 million from the federal government are dedicated to the construction part of the project. Today, we're talking specifically about project development, so that approval is not for those types of funds. However, at some point, the city would have to authorize our construction part of the money in another IGA a few years down the road. And I know that there is some uncertainty, right, with the state and federal ask. As of now, there is no plan to reallocate either of those contributions to the local governments. And moving forward, that will be a conversation for the Steering Committee depending upon how those applications turn out. I'm gonna... Can we move to the next slide? Perfect. And apologies before... Sorry, can we move back to the last one? Before I move on, I do want to note that while we're not voting today, Beaverton's estimated construction contribution is $1.025 million, which would be split over fiscal years '28 through '31, as Andy mentioned. We're not approving that today, but we wanted to make sure that council knew the estimate. There are going to be continued conversations around the cost of construction as some of this uncertainty pans out. We don't anticipate large deviations from the cost, but that will be up to the Steering Committee over the next couple years as project development continues. And apologies now, next slide. Thank you. So, lastly, if the council chooses to move forward with the project as proposed, the next steps include the city manager or her designee negotiating an IGA with Trimet, outlining partner contributions to project development, including the proposed funding contribution of $1 million, which will include the splits over the next two fiscal years, how the city would like to contribute that money, and what the needs of the project are. The project is on a tight timeline, so the expectation is that all the partners will have signed IGAs by June of this year. Staff would bring the draft IGA to council for adoption by that June deadline. And next slide. So, that concludes our presentation today. We're happy to take any questions the council has before voting on the following recommended actions. We've put them back up on the screen for ease of use. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any councillors and mayor have any questions? I... The... Oh, Councillor Dugger?
Yeah, what it was... Maybe you said this. What was our portion of the actual construction cost estimated to be?
Our portion of construction cost at this time would be $1 million, $1.025 million of the total construction. They need $25 million to enter project development, and then the rest would be towards the construction end. But the Steering Committee is not asking for approval of that at this time to provide flexibility to continue to have those conversations throughout the next few years.
So, the $1.0 in development costs is what's being asked now with an additional $1.025 potentially coming? And just... Is that correct? Did I get that right?
That's correct.
And then, what happens if we approve this $1 million and the state says no on their $50 million contribution or something like that, right? Like, are we out of our $1 million? Do we pay for a development project that isn't going to happen? Help me understand that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, that would go back to the Steering Committee. If the $50 million does not come from the state, it's my understanding from the partners that they're not looking to redistribute that over local governments, and there would be a pause, and they would have to reassess what that funding gap looks like in alternatives. So, the timing of that would be around June. So, it would be around the timing of the IGA. So, we would have the ability to take a step back, work with the Steering Committee, if you will, before moving forward with the project development, because we should know by mid-June if there's going to be dedicated funding or not. So, we'll continue to work with Metro through that and Trimet and continue to monitor what those backup plans would look like.
Okay. And then, just maybe there's a question for Jenny. Is it possible to, as we work on the IGA, to make our money contingent upon approval by the state? Is that a possibility, or...?
We can certainly explore that with them and update council as we make progress on that request.
Okay. Yeah, because that would make me feel comfortable supporting the project because I'm all about... I think this is a wonderful project, but, you know, in a fiscal environment where we don't have much money, I would feel really uncomfortable with us contributing to a project that isn't going to move forward. So, if we could put some language in there to maybe make our money the last to go in, or, you know, something like that. I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
And if I can, we do have Kate from Metro here as well to answer questions. Kate, do you have something to that?
Thanks, Jocelyn. Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and provide a little more detail about that scenario and what would happen if our legislative request for $50 million does not come through or does not come through in the full amount. And we do have another option. We're fortunate to be in a position where we do not... Would not rely on the state funding to... For the project development phase, that $25 million that Jocelyn referred to. So, we would still be able to move forward into project development and advance design from 15 to 100% and learn a lot of really important information and get this project in a place where it's shovel-ready and ready to go. And we can also advance the NEPA process. So, that's one thing. And then, we also have options to look at coming back at a future long session. And... And that would still line up with our timeline of moving the project forward.
Okay. Yeah.
But we would not anticipate coming to local jurisdictions to fill that funding gap.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, Kate. Thank you. I... So, you're saying if, even if the state doesn't come through with the completed development work, you know, a change in federal priorities or a federal government or something like that could open up new funding, and we would be shovel-ready at that point? Like, that work wouldn't be wasted. It would just be maybe postponed a year or two? Is that what I'm understanding?
Exactly. We think it's a really valuable effort to move towards project development, and we're fully focused on that, and we see a lot of value.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Thank you. Thank you, Andy, and Jocelyn, and Kate for being here with us this evening. I'm Councillor Gonzalez. Thank you for joining. Councillor Gonzalez and I served on the Stairco for three years together, and it was just a lot of great work, a lot of great work down the corridor. TV Highway needs a lot of love and attention, so I'm excited for us to participate in that. We've been part of the plan along the way. Thank you, Councillor Dugger, for the funding questions. Funding has been the top question that I had. I think I asked about it at nearly every steering committee because it is a big concern, and I think that just keeping an eye on, like, where we're at in our own local economy and budget and federal climate, putting in the investment and to get us development-ready, right? To get us shovel-ready, I think is worthwhile and gets us to be ready for a position if things don't come together right now that we're, like, good to go and ready. So, I just had a comment, and thank you, council, for the consideration and the time spent doing this work together.
Mayor Beatty?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out for the record that Jocelyn is not the Intergovernment Relations Manager. She is the full male deal. She is ours to keep now, so whoever keeps writing that into the script, please don't do that anymore. She's going to start feeling like she's temporary with us. I just wanted to say that breaking it out this way, like, the planning being shovel-ready, I mean, we completely understand that. We're doing similar with the loop. We're looking at stacking projects. We understand what it takes to get where we are. Million dollars is still an awful lot of money for the city. I mean, we're planting our loop at $2 million, so this is double, like, half of what we're asking for to plan the loop and get where we're going. I'm still apprehensive about doing this, but I'm here to support the council. I understand that transportation projects like this take an awful lot of work and timing, and we want to be ready to go. I just also want us to be, like, eyes wide open that this is an expensive project for us compared to our... What we're already trying to accomplish with our own transportation. I have really reserved warm feelings that the legislature in Capcom is going to give or deliver a $50 million ask when the total budget is $550 million and the governor is already claiming a lot of this money. We have capital construction asks for our project. And so, this is our construction project, number one. This is number two for us, is we're helping advocate, get it over the line. So, I am glad the council is here having this conversation, but we need to go into this project's eyes wide open. But, for the record, I plan to vote yes tonight, but I'm just apprehensive in saying it out loud.
Councillor Teeter?
Yeah, I'm excited. I'm very excited for this project. And I would be ready to support the locally preferred alternative, the $1 million in construction funding from our transportation development tax, and moving forward with an IGA with Trimet. The reason is, this is a pretty transformative project, and we often hear that it takes a lot of work for governments to work together to do some really big projects like this. And for Beaverton's contribution to be able to potentially unlock $300 million of investment for the region is pretty impressive. Opportunities like this don't come along very often. And my concern would be if we don't move forward with at least this construction... Or this planning funding at the start, that this opportunity might not emerge again for many years, if ever. And we do know that TV Highway needs a lot of love. Unfortunately, we cannot address everything that TV Highway needs, but we can do a little bit at a time. And this is quite a bit more than a little bit. So, I am very excited about this and really appreciate, Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg, the work that you did on the Steering Committee representing Beaverton. And yeah, excited to move forward.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yeah, just echoing the mayor and councillor Teeter's points about... I am apprehensive, given the fiscal climate that we're in, but also the fact that projects like this are years in the making, something that we talk about when we run. And to actually be able to be a part of the making something happen to improve safety along a very dangerous corridor is... It's exciting. It's also one of those where you've got to have a lot of patience because it's going to take a while even from this point forward. But just as with 82nd Avenue out in East Portland, which was also years in the making, this is a project that's going to save lives and improve transit times and travel reliability. And we're a part of a greater system. So, thanks to the Steering Committee and Metro for bringing all of the different jurisdictional partners together on it and hope that funding comes through.
Thank you. I have a quick question, just one question. Who, if it's going to be... Construction will happen, who's going to be in charge of it? Actual construction? If it's going to happen?
So, the project is currently in Metro's hands in the convening stage, but once project development starts, it will transition to Trimet. So, Trimet will take it through the design and construction phase.
Oh, thank you. Yeah.
For clarity, though, since there's federal money in this project, would an ODOT also have a large role in the construction of this?
And I defer to Kate on if they have to manage any part of the process, but they are part of the partnership and have been along for this process. Kate, do you know if they have to have any oversight or if Trimet is a certified agency to do it themselves?
My understanding is Trimet would lead the construction element and bring on the team for that. And ODOT will be closely involved, obviously, as owner of the roadway and permitting authority. But I can follow up with our Trimet team to provide more detail beyond that basic understanding.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I look forward to looking at the IGA later on because we don't want to lose control of how they do business within the city of Beaverton. So, just, I'd like to look forward to a formation of the IGA. If somebody needs to make an motion? Okay. Please do.
Yes, I do have a clarifying question for our city attorney. Do we need to take these as three separate motions or is a single motion acceptable?
A single motion is acceptable.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I move to approve the proposed locally preferred alternative adopted by the TV Highway Steering Committee for the TV Highway BRT project to allocate... To allocate $1 million in transportation development tax funding for the TV Highway BRT project development and to direct staff to negotiate an intergovernmental agreement with Trimet to specify the roles and responsibilities for the TV Highway BRT project.
Second.
I have a comment, or mayor has a name on it?
Yeah. I just also, like, for the clarity, council president, like, we would have no oversight in this project. This is a county road, not a city road, not a project for us. So, just keep that in mind. With an IGA, we don't... Like, this is not our project in any sense of the term, which is always what's challenging for local government. And this is a big issue with Canyon, is that our local planning really has no jurisdictional authority here. So, just, you could study that IGA until you fall asleep at night, and that still doesn't give us any authority over the project.
Yeah. I'm more interested in my sidewalk. That's my thing, so...
You keep from your mouth to God's ears. We're still not going to get them.
Councillor Hassan?
Oh, I just wanted to comment. I'm fully supportive of this. Thanks for everyone on their work. Fun fact, in 1998, off TV Highway and 160th was a storage unit that our community ran a clothes closet for communities that came from... At the time, it was like Bosnia, Kosovo, a lot of war-torn countries. So, that road in this area is a very personal connection. And I'm glad we're taking a really big first step to start hopefully transforming what safety looks like. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call? Yeah.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Councillor Dugger?
Yes.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Councillor Gonzalez, for coming in. All right. Next, we'll move on to the visitor comments. There's one person registered to comment at tonight's meeting. As a reminder, visitor comments provide the opportunity for the community to speak about matters even if they are not on the agenda. Visitor comments are limited to three minutes for each person. Visitors may state their comments and should not expect the council to engage in back-and-forth dialogue regarding the comments. So, this is a time for the council to hear from the community. If follow-up is needed, our city manager and city recorder are taking notes. I have one person registered. Giselle Garrity, please come up. You have three minutes to make comments.
Councillors, I'm Giselle Garrity, and I live at the corner of 173rd Avenue and Lisa Street in Beaverton. And it's a site of construction for the NTLI project for the large waterline placement for the city of Beaverton. And Emery &amp; Sons is the construction company for it. On March 19th, there was a gas leak. March 20th, loss of Wi-Fi. The gas leak required evacuation of about... For several neighbors for about two and a half hours. And when you're evacuated for a gas leak, you can't take your car. You can't start your car. You can't use your phone. You can't do anything. You have to leave immediately, and you have to walk somewhere. And that day was a rainy day. And because if you start your car and you use your phone, it can create a spark and an explosion. We also, we're not told when to return, so we had no idea. I stood at the site there and just, you know, watched. I asked a gas company employee how long it would take. He said it would take several hours to repair, and they were there for five hours to repair the leak. I was told by a foreman from Emery &amp; Sons that it wasn't their fault, that they don't trust the utilities to locate and mark their cables, pipes, and lines. They don't trust them. So, they said, "So, this isn't our fault at all." So, my question and my neighbor's questions here is, how do they dig if they don't trust the markings, if they don't trust what's there? However, a few days later, he tells me, "Well, actually, this was their operator error. He was digging without a spotter." So, is it the utilities not marking? Or is it just simply carelessness? Do they... Do they... Do they know what, you know? So, my neighbors and I met last week, and we would like Emery &amp; Sons, the construction company, and the utilities to get together and decide what's going on. This gas leak was serious, you know? Well, nobody got hurt, but we could have. And so, how do we get Emery &amp; Sons to dig safely and accurately? That area is where we all live. And we like our neighborhood. It's where we live, and we want Emery &amp; Sons to dig, but to do it in a safe manner. Our street, unfortunately, looks like a disaster area. I mean, there are holes all over, and every day, they... They... They dig, and they cover them. The next day, they dig the same hole again and cover them again, and it's just totally covered. But that's another issue. The gas leak is what we're really concerned about now. And I've been in touch with the engineer for this project.
Thank you. We have over...
And he agrees.
We went over time.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Thank you for coming in.
Sure.
Okay. We have two proclamations to read. Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg, will you read the first proclamation regarding the Fair Housing Month?
Thank you. Proclamation on behalf of the Office of the Mayor of the City of Beaverton. Whereas the City of Beaverton values diversity, equity, and inclusion as core principles that enhance the strength and vibrancy of our community and recognizes that access to fair housing is a critical component of achieving an equitable society. And whereas, the month of April 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act of 1968 remains a key tool in fighting housing discrimination, ensuring protections for individuals regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability, or familial status, and reminds us that more work is needed to address ongoing disparities. And whereas, Oregon Fair Housing Law guarantees that housing throughout the state of Oregon should be made available to all citizens without regard to marital status, source of income, sexual orientation, including gender identity, and survivors of domestic violence. And whereas, fair housing benefits the community by providing economic stability, increasing community health, and by improving human relations in all communities through diversity and integration. And whereas, acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are unacceptable to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now, therefore, Lacey Beatty, the mayor of the City of Beaverton, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, does hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five as Fair Housing Month in the City of Beaverton and urge all residents to observe this month by reaffirming our commitment to fair housing for all and joining the effort to promote and support fair housing.
Thank you. Do we have somebody to receive the proclamation here tonight? Thank you. Let's just. Take a picture? Okay, um, we'll move on to the next one. Um, I'll read the second proclamation regarding Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We are reading this proclamation in April to align with the council meeting schedule as our only May council meeting is too late for the official observance of Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. Proclamation, City of Beaverton, whereas Beaverton celebrates its strength as one of the most diverse cities in Oregon, where one in three residents identifies as a person of color and one in five was born outside of the United States. And whereas Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities in Beaverton represent over sixteen percent of the population and include dozens of language and cultures. And whereas, we recognize the generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders who have enriched Beaverton's history, local economy, and cultural vibrancy and who are instrumental to our future success. And whereas, the month of May was chosen for this Heritage Month to commemorate commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May seventh eighteen forty-three and the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May tenth eighteen sixty-nine, for which the majority of the tracks laid were by Chinese immigrants. And whereas, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities have persevered over discrimination, exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities and continue to experience injustices today. And whereas, AANHPI Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the remarkable achievements and pay tribute to the generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders that have contributed to our cities and America's history, society, and culture. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beaverton, Oregon, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-five as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Beaverton. Do we have anyone to receive this proclamation? No? All right.
I'm going to present it to you.
That's okay. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. A second?
Okay, Counselor Hassan and Counselor Hartmeier Prigg. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes. Um, I want to highlight one item in our contract review portion of the consent agenda. This is a contract change for sidewalk improvement at Beard and one fifty-first. I just want to highlight some of the work that the city and its partners have been doing. Since over the past two years, we've improved one hundred and eighty-eight different crosswalks intersections to be ADA accessible. And I think that's a pretty major, major accomplishment and we got a lot more to go, but this is really good work. I don't want it to slip by without any recognition. And this will improve one more, add one more really important one to that list.
Thank you. Uh, any more comments? None. All right. Uh, city recorder, please take the vote by roll call.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counsel Counsel President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Um, moving on, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing regarding the resolution adopting a comprehensive fee schedule for the city services and repealing numerous resolutions. This fee schedule will have a financial impact on Beaverton residents, businesses, and other others that pay fees in Beaverton. Okay, as a Beaverton resident, I have an actual conflict of interest that I that I need to announce. The actual conflict of interest is that the tonight's decision will lead to changes in local fees for businesses that will affect my business's financial situation. I encourage each council member present to consider making a similar announcement of a potential or actual conflict of interest before we begin.
I can go. Oh, sorry. Okay, I too have a potential, or no, I too have an actual conflict of interest that I need to announce. As a Beaverton resident and business owner, the decision tonight will lead to changes in local fees for businesses that will affect my business businesses' financial situation.
I too have an actual conflict of interest that I need to announce as a Beaverton resident and married to a business owner. Uh, the the decision tonight will lead to change, changes in local fees for businesses that will affect my business businesses' financial situation.
I also have an actual conflict of interest. Uh, both resident and business owner paying the business license fees. Uh, the decision tonight could lead to changes in those fees that could affect my business's financial condition.
I too have an actual conflict of interest that I need to announce. As a Beaverton resident and business owner, the decision tonight will lead to changes in local fees for businesses that will affect my business financial situation.
I have a potential conflict of interest that I need to announce. Although I do not anticipate paying any of the fees listed as a Beaverton resident, the decision tonight will lead to changes in fees that may affect my own personal financial situation if I need to pay a fee in the future.
Thank you. Mayor?
I too have an actual contrast conflict of interest due to my husband owning a business within the city limits. So uh tonight I will be not speaking, but voting on the motions.
Thank you. Before we move to the substance of hearing, I will ask the city attorney to explain how the hearing will proceed.
Well, based on this quite novel uh set of circumstances, we have most of our council actually conflicted out this evening on this item. What that means is that there would not be a quorum that could um could vote on this item. What what the law does allow, however, in this very rare circumstance is that you may not discuss anything regarding the business license fees or the entire resolution if we package it as one piece. But you could, as a body, vote to approve or not approve this resolution. So the council has a couple of options this evening regarding how to move forward. If the council wishes to discuss any portion of the resolution for the master fees that is not business licenses, because all I heard this evening were that the conflicts were around the business license portion, then we could move to remove that portion from consideration, hold the hearing. You would not be able to comment or ask any questions about that that particular item. And then we would vote at the end. You would have to vote in two separate motions to approve it. Alternatively, if the council would choose, as the mayor kind of already signaled, that they there's no desire to actually discuss the master fee resolution, then you can just proceed through your hearing. You wouldn't ask any questions. You would refrain from discussion. You'd move straight to motion and vote. So you have two options. I would say a simple one, which is option two, if you don't want to discuss it. Or um a a slightly more complicated option if you want to discuss portions of the master fee resolution. But this time, you'll need to decide which way you would like to go. And then um I can help you get get down the correct path once, once you have decided whether or not you want to discuss anything in this resolution.
Uh, Mayor Beatty? Your phone?
My preference tonight would be to take the simple path and vote through the motion without discussion.
Counselor Tivnan?
Viewing this in preparation for the meeting, no burning questions popped out at me, so I'm comfortable doing that as well.
Any anyone else? No. Somebody needs to make a motion?
We don't need a motion if we don't care to discuss. We just proceed with the hearing.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, again, you'll be refraining from all questions and discussion throughout the entire portion of the hearing. Usually, you could ask participants and staff questions. You will not be able to do that this evening. And then you'll move straight to a vote at the end.
Okay.
I'll remind you if anybody tries to ask a question.
Okay, um, I'll ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in the hearing.
Anyone wishing to speak at the hearing tonight should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, there's a comment card at the back of the room. You can fill that out and hand it to the city recorder up at the end of the dais and wait for your name to be called. After each person's comments, then they will move to the next speaker. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation? Yes, I see you right there. Okay. Please go ahead.
So I'll make this very brief. Um, just a reminder of where we were. This is a long time coming to getting this comprehensive fee schedule. This came out of the financial or the fiscal sustainability subcommittee's work, where they identified several different strategies for us to address our budget issues. One of those was a recommendation to study our fees. Our fees are less than five percent of our overall general fund revenue, about five point six million of a hundred and ten million dollar budget. So it's not going to solve all our problems, but it does solve a lot of our problems. So um we hired a consultant. We did the analysis. We um I just want to remind you that the cost associated with the fees services, that's a fact. But the fees that we set, that's a policy choice for the council. So what we are proposing is um just a recommended uh comprehensive fee schedule. Um, in this fee schedule, there are fees that have been increased to cover their full cost. There are also some fees that are being incrementally increased over multiple years because, you know, to raise a fee four dollars is not a big deal, but to raise it ten thousand dollars might be. So we have some noted on the fee schedule that will be phased in over a a period of years. And then we also have some fees that are being subsidized to reduce economic barriers or encourage certain types of development. And then we've also eliminated some fees. Um, and I'll just say refundable deposits essentially have been eliminated from our fee schedule. Uh, they're just don't seem to be worth the administrative burden. And we can manage our facilities through policy and we don't need to collect a deposit for that. So then also the fees will increase annually by CPI and it'll be rounded up to the nearest dollar. So the changes, like I said, most of the fees are increased to recover their full cost. We have added some new fees. Um, in this, uh, I have also discovered there's some other new fees that will be looked at next time we do this in in about two years. Um, hopefully by then we'll have more data, so we'll be able to actually tell you what the increases could bring in revenue. But as a reminder, when we studied our fees, the analysis showed that we were recovering about forty-one percent of our costs in in planning and site development areas. So that is the area where you see the fees being phased in because some of them are very large increases. Um, and then, as I said, we are subsidizing some fees. Um, for example, appeal fees, we've kept that deliberately low so that we don't create an economic barrier. Same with police reports for crime victims. We don't charge for that. And then also in the development side, accessory dwelling units, um, those applications are being subsidized because we do want to incentivize that type type of development. And as I said before, we have eliminated some of our fees. There's been some changes in processes. We no longer offer uh audio tape or micro fees, so those have come off the fee schedules. And um copy fees are really reduced into the public records fees. So the benefit of this is we are consolidating over seventy-five active resolutions into one. Uh, I think I counted them at eighty, so that's why I said over seventy-five because I couldn't say over eighty. Um, so this will um reduce confusion. It will make sure we are charging the fees where we're supposed to be charging fees. That's another thing that we found is we might have a fee that isn't being charged. Um, but now that we have it all in one place, it is transparent for the council and the public to understand what our fees are and ensure that we are aligning those fees with council's priorities. So with that, staff recommends that the council adopt the resolution adopting a comprehensive fee schedule for city services and repealing numerous resolutions. And I'm happy not to take any questions.
I will now open the public hearing. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak on the proposed ordinance?
No, there is no one present either in person or online uh to testify.
There appears to be no member of the public who wants to speak on this matter tonight. I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that the council adopt the comprehensive fee schedule embodied in Agenda Bill two five zero five zero, a resolution adopting a comprehensive fee schedule for city services and repealing numerous resolutions.
Second.
Can we discuss? No.
You'll move straight to a roll call.
Okay, ready for a vote? Would the city recorder please call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counsel President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Um, now we move on to the public public hearing number two. Uh, next item, the next item on the agenda, the public hearing to consider appointment of Scott Kaplan as city attorney. Before we begin, I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate in this hearing.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, there's a comment card at the back of the room. You can fill out that comment card and provide it to the city recorder at the end of the dais. Each member of the public who speaks this evening will have up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comments, the council may ask questions of the presenter. When all public comment has concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or any questions.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation?
There is no staff presentation this evening. Back in February, the council directed staff to make a contingent offer to its top candidate. That top candidate has cleared all the contingencies and the actual appointment is before you this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff from the council? None. I will now open the public hearing. City recorder, is there anyone to speak on the proposed resolution?
No, there is no one in person or online to testify.
Okay, there appears to be no one to comment on this matter tonight. I'll now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion?
Sure. Uh, I move that the council authorize the mayor to sign the employment agreement for the city attorney on behalf of the city council.
Second.
If I can just add, for folks who are trying to follow, we are hiring our city attorney and it requires a public hearing. So we went through a process and we're very excited to have them join us soon.
All right, first and seconded. Uh, any discussion? What's your name in the chat? Oh, Mayor Beatty?
Thank you. Uh, I just want to, ahead of our vote that I know will pass, uh, welcome the new city attorney. Uh, this has been a long process. I want to thank the team that worked together to do the early interviews, taking time out of our schedule, the multiple conversations we have about this. The council only has three employees. The city attorney is one of them. Trying to get seven people to hire someone is a pretty difficult task to do. But here we are. But here we are, in the final stage, getting ready for one of our new employees to join us.
Do you want Counselor Teeter?
I just want to second Mayor's saying. This is a really exciting moment for the city. I think we're getting somebody who is very highly qualified, very capable, and fills a lot of the needs that the city has, especially at this point in the political environment that we're working within right now. And so, really excited to hire Scott and have him be part of the team, and hopefully move forward really, really well with him.
Anyone else? No? I have a quick question where, I know in the budget impact, we set aside this portion for this year's budget. Going forward with our reduction, is there any plan or how it's going to impact the future budgets?
Point of clarification, I don't know that we can talk about it because it's a budget thing, and the budget has not been prepared. So we, right from our last meeting when we talked about the, why can't I think, the mid-year, right? We can't, it's not published yet.
Okay. Clear? Okay. All right, good, good. At least we have experts telling me. Okay, no more discussion? So we are ready for a vote? Would the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Right. All right. So I'm going to read the first one. Yes, please do. All right. So next, we have five first reading ordinances. On April 15, 2025, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance annexing one parcel of land located at 12870 Southwest Walker Road, withdrawing the property from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, the Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District, and the Toaltin Valley Water District, and adding the property to the Central Beaverton Neighborhood Association Committee, LU 32024-01034, 12870 Southwest Walker Road Annexation, ANX 2024-01031. Go ahead.
Also, on April 15, 2025, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, land use map, and the zoning map for one parcel located at 12870 Southwest Walker Road. This is application LU 32024-01034, at, or 12870 Southwest Walker Road Annexation Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And that's a CPMA 32024-01032 and ZMAX 12025-00089.
On April 15, 2025, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance annexing one parcel of land at 8150 Southwest Birchwood Road and abutting portions of Southwest Birchwood Road, withdrawing the property from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District and the Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District, and adding the property to the West Slope Neighborhood Association Committee, LU 32025-00055, 8150 Birchwood Annexation, ANX 2025-00052.
On April 15, 2025, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, land use map, and the zoning map for one parcel at 8150 Southwest Birchwood Road and abutting portions of Southwest Birchwood Road, LU 32025-00055, 8150 Southwest Birchwood Annexation Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments, CPMA 32025-00053, ZMAX 32025-00054.
25056, ordinance number TBD? Oh. Wait. Okay. Sorry, everybody. On April 15, 2025, during a regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending Beaverton Code Section 7.01.015 relating to definitions in the Beaverton Tax Ordinance. This concludes the first reading ordinances portion of our agenda. I'm sorry, council president, if I stole your thunder on that.
No problem. Yeah. Great, great reading. All right. We'll now enter the work session regarding...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I believe that two of the ordinances read... No, I'm sorry. For a second there, I thought they were, they're the same number, but two separate ordinance titles.
Don't make me nervous. We'll now enter the work session regarding the transportation systems plan approach. We'll begin the work session with the presentation by senior planner Jessica Engelmann. But when the presentation is done, each counselor will have the opportunity to comment on the presentation and ask questions of the presenter. Please give us a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. My name is Jessica Engelmann. I'm a senior planner and the project manager for the Go Beaverton Transportation Plan Update. And I am joined online by Brian Martin, the long-range planning manager. He should be up on screen soon. He's in Denver, Colorado, but coming in for this meeting. We're here tonight to talk with you in more detail about the project approach for Beaverton's TSP update. I'm going to start us off with a short presentation, and then we're looking forward to hearing from you. So there are two questions that we'd like to hear your thoughts on tonight. The first is whether you have any questions or comments on the overall project approach. And then the second is whether you have any questions about the next phase of work, the existing conditions analysis. So just as a reminder, the vision for this plan is access for everyone, that we all have real travel choices, that we can count on, that we can afford, that we can safely enjoy, that help people and planet thrive now and into the future. So we're calling this approach to this TSP update an envision and enable approach. It begins with analyzing existing conditions and getting our bearings about how the system is working today. We'll do this through data analysis and by going out into the community and learning about people's everyday experience using the system. Once we understand how things are working today, we'll turn toward defining Beaverton's transportation future, so how we want the city's networks and streets to look and function. To identify needs and solutions, we'll compare today's conditions to this future system. Then we'll work with you to prioritize projects and develop a game plan for adjusting city codes, policies, standards, to enable these changes and incrementally build out that complete system. At every point in this process, we'll be engaging with the community and gathering information to help inform the plan. So let's go over what's included in each of these steps. Right now, we're in the process of analyzing where people live and work, the types of trips people are making, and inventorying information about Beaverton's streets, sidewalks, its bike routes, its public transit service, including information about how they're paid for, how they're built, taken care of, and where there are safety concerns, particularly based on past crash history and factors that we know that could contribute to a severity of a crash. To complement this, we'll be going out into the community this spring and summer to learn firsthand about people's experience using today's system. We'll inquire about where people have safety concerns and where they might want to travel for short trips by walking, rolling, biking, or taking public transportation, but where they might not be able to, or where they might not feel comfortable doing so now, based on those current conditions. We know the transportation system makes a big difference in people's lives. So we're really looking forward to getting out there and hearing how people are using, or perhaps not using, the system today, and what changes might enable them to travel in ways that they want to and that are, that also advance the vision and goals of this plan. We'd like to come back to you with the results of the existing conditions analysis in November of this year. So as we move into defining what a future system should look and function like, we'll be doing that in two ways. The first way is by defining what is included in a complete network. We'll be defining this for the pedestrian, the bicycle, public transportation, vehicular freight, and emergency vehicle networks. We'll look both at how a network functions on its own and how networks connect to each other. So for example, how people can use the pedestrian network to safely and comfortably access the bus network. We'll be bringing you maps and definitions of what could be included in a complete network, including expectations for various components, like street crossings and street designs that are in alignment with that vision and those goals. So the second way, we'll be defining what we want for the future, is by defining what makes for a complete street. This definition will largely be about the quality of experience for users and how the street integrates into the places that they're located within. You can expect to see a set of street types along with what the city's proposed expectations are for each type of street and the proposed future networks in spring of 2026, so in about a year from now. It's also important to note, as part of this project, in the implementation phase, we'll be defining how to go about making design and operational decisions where physical space and funding might be limited, which we know is often the case. So the gap between where we are today versus where we want to be, that'll be considered a need. And we expect the needs are going to be plentiful. As we identify the needs, we'll also want to be acknowledging that it will take time and resources to address them, and that that change is going to really happen incrementally. However, only by knowing where the needs are can we, as a city, then set out to address them strategically. So for example, in places where there are the greatest opportunities to see those benefits. Again, we expect what we learn from the community over the summer about where community members see safety concern or see an opportunity will really help us complete that needs identification as well. So moving on to solutions, we'll be diversifying beyond just major capital projects, which have traditionally been the focus of transportation system plans. This includes looking for ways to affect change through well-crafted policies and standards and processes that allow for those incremental changes and investments in the system to happen regularly. A large share of investments in the transportation system are completed with private development. This project will update regulatory documents to apply updated policies to transportation work required with that private development as well. It also means exploring ways to make changes to streets more quickly through repurposing of existing public right-of-way and using less permanent materials like paint or post or removable planter boxes to more quickly respond to community needs and experiment with lower-cost solutions. We'll be looking also to, for ways programs can complement capital investments. For example, programs that measure the performance of a project or promote the use of infrastructure or encourage people to walk, bike, or take public transportation for some of those trips that they need to make. And again, we know that the needs will outpace the resources that we have. So we're going to need to prioritize where to start first. We'll need to find those projects that can complement one another, amplify benefits, minimize burdens, particularly on those that are already socially vulnerable within the current system that we have. So I just want to wrap up by emphasizing a few key actions that we know, based on existing research, have the potential to advance multiple goals at once. The overall project approach that we just went over centers around these key actions. They include reducing vehicle speeds. By reducing vehicle speeds, we're reducing the chance of serious and fatal injuries. And we're also, at the same time, creating more welcoming environments for people walking, biking, and enjoying destinations along the street. It includes completing those pedestrian, bicycle, and transit networks. This allows people to get from one destination to another with confidence that there's going to be a reliable and direct route that will get them to where they need to go. It includes completing streets so that the people, the pedestrians, the bicycle, and people traveling by transit feel welcome and are safe, and the system is accessible to everyone, particularly people who we know more heavily rely on these modes to access the places that they're going, like youth and older adults and people with disabilities. It means focusing attention on where people are making short trips. These are the trips that are taking locally, where the city has the most control over the design of the street and where people are the most likely to use active modes of transportation to get to where they need to go, if they feel safe and welcome on them. And finally, it includes redefining and repurposing that public right-of-way so that it can provide more space for traffic calming, for those complete street treatments, public arc, enhanced greenery, tree canopies. So again, these are two questions, really looking to see if you have any questions or comments about the overall approach to the project, and then thinking about the next phase of the work, analyzing existing conditions, and seeing if you have any questions about that. Thank you.
Counselor Teeter?
Thanks, Jessica. I don't have any concerns about our approach in the longer term or in the next phase. I think it makes a lot of sense. I can see the vision and the process for how we're trying to get to where we're going. I am really excited for this next phase to hear what the community would actually like to see. So I think we'll have some really lightening conversations. I think the images that you all have created of example streets will be really good framing points of conversation. The names that are shown on some of those designs could be a little confusing for people. Regional access or regional mobility streets. And some people might not be able to contextualize what that actually means. So if there's some way to contextualize that or provide some additional definition, that could help. But again, I think we've said this last time we talked about the TSP. This is one of the most transformational projects we'll work on, and I'm very excited about it. So keep up the good work, and we'll be excited to hear what people hear, what people say over the summer.
Counselor Hassan?
Just one request, and this might be more for city staff. As you do community engagement, if there are opportunities for us to uplift in our different networks, I know we'd want to make sure that we're, we've got different groups of folks that we associate with. This is so exciting, we're so close. I feel like I've touched this so many times, I really have nothing to say except really great work and looking forward to what this leads to. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Thank you, Jessica. Kind of related to what Counselor Hassan said, if there's opportunities that we, as counselors, can come out to any of the events, if you're tabling or anything, I'd love to be able to participate. I don't want to volunteer anyone else. But you know, if there's a schedule of things that, you know, you might want us to come, listen, be a volunteer at a table, happy to do that. And I'm just reflecting on a project I have at work right now, where we didn't do a solid enough current state analysis. And so I love that that's where we're starting, right? Because it just helps us really define clearly the problem, the problem statement. And I also just loved hearing about the creativity that you're already thinking about. With the problems that we can anticipate, we're going to need different solutions to get after them. And so just, it's so well thought out, and even with the preliminary, you know, committee work that's been done and the outreach that you've done just to get to this point, thank you. I think it's really well reflective of our needs. And yeah, thank you.
Counselor Dugger?
Thank you for this. I know at least probably a dozen times Counselor Teeter and maybe others have talked about rapid experimentation and like just kicking the tires on something before we investing. And I think that's a critical part of this. Probably, I would have bolded that even more, right? Like, that's going to be a really important part. I look forward to prioritizing networks, too. I think, for those of you who bicycle or cycle in town, there's the cutest little bike lane on Cedar Hill, and it is two blocks long. And it's because of our current, you know, when things get developed, you know, transportation investments happen, and in that, in front of that shopping center, it's a beautiful bike lane that goes two blocks and then puts you right back in traffic. And so I don't think I've ever seen anyone, you know, as someone who bikes thousands of miles a year, a couple thousand at least, I don't know, I've ever seen anyone on that. So I think prioritizing networks is going to be a critical part. For the second question, my hope is that the next phase will actually... For, for the second question, my hope is that the next phase will actually, and I, I guess I'm talking to us in this one, might require some policy innovation, particularly as we think about prioritizing networks. It is so easy just to put a rule in and say, as a developer, whenever you build this thing, you've got to do that road, but then we end up with, with two-block-long bicycle lanes, or we end up with a really great section of sidewalk in front of the property with no connections on either side, right? And so like, from a policy perspective, I think it's going to open up an opportunity for us to be innovative and to really think, think about, are we actually prioritizing network and really focusing on that? And I hope we are, because it sounds like, I, I know I've heard you all talk about this, and I certainly have too, so I'm going to challenge each of us to really invest even more in this and figure this out with our staff. This was really great, and I'm super excited for this work, and I just, I love that this is happening. It's complicated, it is hard, it is multi-multi-years, but I, I just thank the staff a lot for this and my colleagues, and I think we've got a lot in front of us, but I'm excited to do the work myself. So, thank you.
Counselor Tepn?
One of the first documents I reviewed when I was considering running was the current TSP, which is very big and very old at this point, and also noticing that some of the capital projects that were identified in it no longer makes sense in the current scheme of things, and it kind of prompted a question for me around, as the existing conditions analysis and research is being conducted, what role does the past TSP play in that? In terms of evaluating some of the past decisions that were made about where the need was, and then not using it necessarily to inform the current ones, but to just use it as a desk reference for where we used to be versus where we want to put our priorities now? And then I have a comment after that.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I mean, I think, um, one of the places that we'll definitely want to be making sure that we're assessing, um, like what are the policies in there that we're using to, we don't want to throw things out that are working, right? So we need to be making sure that we're keeping the things that do work. We also want to be really looking at those networks, right? So we'll go back to that and look at what the networks are that we have in there. We'll also be looking at the active transportation plan, right? Well, that never got fully adopted into the transportation system plan officially. It is some, a lot of work with the community, and a lot of work went into it, and so it offers a really good starting point to really be thinking about, okay, well, does that actually go with the future that we're really looking to, right? So again, I just want to emphasize, we don't want to throw out things that are working, so it's, it's not just completely disregarding the past, but it's, it's taking it and looking at it with a critical eye in relation to the goals and the vision that we're really working towards now.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then to Counselor Duggar's point about, um, thinking about the areas where we could be prioritizing active transportation, and to a point that you had made during your presentation about promoting alternative travel usage, to try and get people to use facilities, it's, it's just an area that I couldn't help but think about. Some of the transportation improvements made in other cities, the one I'm thinking of is, is just east of us, where they build out a new facility, and on pretty much any given day, you can drive by it and there's nobody using it. And I, I know that when we do get the, the draft plan, it's going to be like drinking from a fire hose of all of the different things that could happen throughout the city, but that is one area that, especially right now when we're so carefully weighing where we're putting our investments, is how much of this is it, is it aspirational of, we want people to use things a certain way, and then finding ourselves in a situation where we have to pay to actively promote to try and get people to use them? I, I, I know that's a really hard puzzle to solve for, especially as, as we might be trying to influence behavior around the choices that people make when they're out and about versus what the community is telling us. So I'm very interested in, in hearing what the feedback is from the community and where those needs are, and then carefully weigh that against the behaviors that we're hoping to encourage with future investments that we make.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of ways to do that with intentionality as well, and working with our partners to make sure that if that's something that we're, we're really wanting, to make sure that we're promoting it as we're going. I'm not, I'm not sure that it's always requiring dollar signs along with it. I think some of the strategies that you're going to find in this plan will also be around coordination and around making sure that we're keeping that top of mind as we go forward. So just something, it will be a good conversation when we get to it, for sure.
Thank you. I have, I have a question. So when was the last TSP written?
The last time we updated it was in 2010.
2010?
Mm-hmm.
So from that, uh, we go back and reassess, right? What was the guiding policy when we did 2010 update? My question is, how is that different than now, right? And then, do you have a clear idea of our policy direction from us when you're making these updates? Do you have like a clear picture?
Well, I mean, I'd say that there was one, not one defining policy that drove the, the last TSP update. We're always having to, again, I, I want to go back to, we need to be in, um, consistent with both state and regional rules. So there, if there's one absolute thing that we need to be syncing up with, it's with the state transportation planning rules and the regional functional plan, so the regional version of that. So at that point, when the, the TSP was updated in 2010, we were really working with a set of rules that were what the rules were in 2010 at the state and the region. So I'd say that was really probably influencing a lot of the direction of how that plan went. Those rules have changed significantly. That's also part of the reason why we're updating this plan. I think as in terms of whether we have a good idea of what we're hearing from you all right now, going, starting with the vision and goals, that was really laying, and actually even going back further to that complete streets policy, right? We've been coming back to you with a couple of key things, and this is the latest one of saying, okay, well, we, this is the vision and the goals and objectives that we're working toward. This is the project approach that we think will get us there. It's sort of foreshadowing what's to come as we move through, actually talking about, okay, what are our standards, what are our policies? And that'll be a whole nother conversation to have with y'all. So I think, I, I, I feel pretty good about, you've been very generous with, with your input in terms of what you're, what you're thinking, so that's been quite helpful, but the conversation's going to continue for another couple of years.
Okay. One, one quick follow-up is, um, I forgot. Okay. Counselor Teeter?
Okay, maybe it'll come back to you after I just respond, respond to comments and questions you all just shared. So our agenda bill mentioned one of the key differences from the 2010 update was the, the 2010 version focused a lot on vehicle movement. Predicting and providing was the, was the wording that, that was used back then, and so it was focused on vehicle movement and capacity of the street for, for cars, very auto-centric. And so this is really a, a very different lens that we're looking at this through, where it's not just, how many cars can you move down the street, but can people get there safely? Can people with different types of movement needs get there conveniently and safely and comfortably? Doesn't take into, or now it takes into consideration our climate goals and climate values, our affordability values, like there's a lot that we've baked into this with the vision work that we've already done, so Jessica, thank you for, for your work on that. So I think just starting out, the vision for where we're wanting to go is, is dramatically different, and I think it'll lead us to a better place over a long course of time, but it'll lead us to a better place eventually.
Thank you, Counselor Teeter. Uh, yeah, that's a great way of describing it, and I think that this is a much more proactive approach, where we had been sort of reactive and reacting to continuing, uh, really vehicular focus congestion, and then just chasing that over and over and over, and it kept on inducing more demand, and it wasn't really helping us achieve these other goals. I just want, Brian, did you want to weigh in on anything real quick? I, I just want to phone a friend real quick to see if there's anything to say.
No, I, I think the answer isn't clear, and I appreciate the counselor's questions and the comments.
Thank you.
I, I just remembered. So we have TSP, we have a, we have a development code, right? Comprehensive plan, we have a traffic plan. When we're making new developments or making changes, what leads the plan? So is it all uniformly talking to each other, or we have three separate ideas going on?
So they all need to talk to each other, and they're all interwoven, and that is complex. And I will say that that is probably, this is probably going to take a while, particularly in the end, because we want to bring you a full package so that this plan is actually implementable when it hits the ground, right? So it's moving in such a different direction, and that a lot of our standards and things like that in the development code, um, and other implementing documents are, are going to need to be touched as well. And luckily, we have a great team in Public Works and on the planning side, but it's going to take a, a real all-hands-on-deck to make sure all of the linkages here and there and everywhere get, um, get updated, and that we've really thought through how they work together, because we use several documents when development comes in and, or when we're even doing like a capital improvement project, to really guide the way that's done. So yeah, it's going to be a big lift, but I think we're, we're going in eyes wide open of the task ahead of us.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, have a good night.
So final item on the agenda, it's a council of your business, does anyone have anything they wish to share? Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone knows, um, so for the last year and a half, I've sat as liaison for the Oregon Startup Center, and Jim McCray has retired as the executive director, and I know many of you know him. He's been an integral part of our community and for the Startup Center, but also in the arts community and a number of different city volunteer roles, so I just want to kind of acknowledge him from, in, in the many years of work, and, and just, you know, it's been a pleasure working with him, and I just want to make sure you all know. Send him a nice note if you can, if you get a few minutes, because I think our volunteers are one of our, our, our best resources here in Beaverton, and, and, you know, Jim has certainly worked really hard, so thank you, Jim.
All right, thank you. Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I know we're trying to get out of here, y'all. I just want to take a moment and reflect on some of what's been happening nationally, particularly folks who have, I don't want to use the word disappearing, but have, have had some cases, and it has caused a lot of, particularly in my community, like unsettling of whether it's safe to be out and about and what safety looks like, and so just reminding us all that a lot of people are in a lot of different places around their safety out and about, but also if you are out and about and you see something, it's really cool to start yelling, but not in a way that would cause drama, but simply to support a person who might be being taken and/or to provide support in different ways, because some of what we have seen has been particularly disturbing, and so just, you know, being ready to write down a phone number for a friend in case they need to reach somebody, in case they're being taken or something like that. So just something for us all to think about. It, it weighs particularly heavy on me, given that a lot of the people that have been taken have been people of color and/or Muslim, which are two identities of mine, so thank you.
Counselor Teeter?
I just want to highlight the Saturday at West Elementary, celebrating Arbor Day, and the staff have done a lot of really good work planning a, a tree planting event. I think registration might already be full, but it's really exciting, staff have been working on this with the community and some of, some of our partners. My second comment might be for the city manager. We had a public testimony tonight about the gas leak, have staff been in contact with that resident? Okay, yes, okay, thanks.
Um, I know Jenny wanted to get out of here at nine, so I gotta kind of drag along though.
You've exceeded my expectations.
Okay. Uh, no, I've, I've one last comment, kind of follow-up. It's a, uh, since I'm an immigrant, first-generation immigrant, who had to get green card and then go through three to five years of wait, and then go to, they give you a hundred questions to memorize, and then I have to sit down for interview, they verify if I'm legit or not, and then got, finally got citizenship. But I've been surrounded by the people who's always giving me a phone call that, is it okay for me to travel outside of the US? I tell them, try not to, because unless you're a US, US citizen, but even if you're a US citizen, try not to, because when you're coming back, if they give you any suspicion whatsoever, they can grab everything from you, open up your phone, everything, and then there's no privacy. And then for non-citizens, who's a legal resident or legal visa holders, anything you do, you can be detained, right? So, uh, and then the people who come to my clinic, they, if they're non-citizens, they all carry their passports with them, because ID's just not enough, because they want to know your status. So they're really afraid right now, and I wanted to share with the community that we are aware, there's not much as a city we could do, but as, as, what I was reading in the proclamation today, it's one-third of residents are people of color, but it's actually like forty-two percent, so almost a half, and then one out of five is foreign-born, which means they're first generation, living in the second and third generations. One thing that I want to share is that the current administration uses Alien Enemies Act, which was for from revolution, Revolutionary War to, uh, for the French nationals who are enemies of the US at that time, but it was used in World War II for Japanese-Americans, and over a hundred twenty of them were in internment camp, but almost all of them are US citizens. So when you start using that act, even though I'm a US citizen, I'm not safe, right? So, because I'm surrounded by people like that, and then we have our residents and workers here are mostly, not mostly, but one, almost half is person of color, I want to highlight that, that is our neighbors, it is the people that send schools to our schools, it is our restaurants that we see every day, the back of their mind, they're afraid, so I just want to share that we understand that.
Thank you.
That's it for tonight. That concludes our meeting tonight. Meeting is adjourned.